Thank you.
It's a little bit like herding cats tonight. Thank you for your patience and good evening everyone and welcome to the Rancho Palos Verdes City Council meeting for December 11, 2024. Roll call please.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Here.
Councilmember Seo.
Here.
Mayor Potem Alegría.
Here.
Mayor Crichton.
Here.
You have a quorum mayor. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, tonight we have actually three troops with us. We have Troop 276, PAC 955, and PAC 846, and they're going to be leading us in the pledge. But before they do that, they're going to be presenting the colors. So if I can have these fine young individuals come on up, and are they bringing the flags up as well? Okay, please.
Color guard attention. Audience please rise. Color guard forward march.
I'm good.
Color guard halt. Color guard cross the colors. Captain salute. Those that uniform, please remove your hat and place your right hand over your heart.
Please recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard post the flag of the great state of California. Color guard honor color. Color guard, honor color.
Great job.
Thank you. That was terrific. Next item, please.
Is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Bradley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, forgive me, Councilmember Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alegria.
Yes.
Mayor Krukshank.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our ceremonial matters and certification of election. Our first event is the presentation to Mayor Krukshank and Mayor Protem Alegria.
Okay, I guess I'm supposed to introduce a short video presentation highlighting our Mayor Protem Eric Alegria.
When you look up the word service, it says the action of helping or doing work for someone. That definition would describe Councilman Eric Alegria. For the past seven years, Eric has served his beloved community of Rancho Palos Verdes as councilman and mayor. There were many challenges along his journey, but there were two constants in his life, his family and his community. And Eric sometimes combined the two when he participated with his family at many events like Whale of a Day, our sister city celebration, and the Fourth of July. We have watched Eric's children grow up, and who knows, they might just follow in his footsteps. Young people have always been a driving force for Alegria. Along the way, Eric created the first ever youth advisory committee along with Councilman Paul Seal. When there was a need to tackle issues for our teens, Eric reached out to local leaders from all four cities to participate in a PSA which focused on mental health issues for our young people. He also officiated the grand opening of the Gatekeepers on Western Avenue. And speaking of Western Avenue, Alegria served on the subcommittee that initiated the completion of the first stage of the Western Avenue Beautification and Rebranding Project. As mayor, Alegria facilitated the first anniversary celebration at City Hall as a sister city with Sakura City Japan, which included the unveiling of the Sakura City sign at the Kendita Civic Center. Eric also hosted the mayor's luncheon. Alegria also served on the Public Facility Subcommittee with Mayor John Krukshank, which led to the grand opening of the Lidera Linda Center, as well as the completion of Phase One of the Civic Center's master plan. Over his time on council, we all learned how the community helped each other during a pandemic. As mayor, during this time, he worked tirelessly to reopen the city and help local businesses. Eric reached out to make sure that our first responders were also taken care of and appreciated. There were many issues that Eric has been a part of, including being an advocate on the e-bike ordinance, the no smoking ordinance on multiple family units, and initiated the plastic waste ordinance. Alegria also formed a partnership with Alcove as a part of the Beach Cities Health District. Alegria also introduced using a 10-year financial model during the budget process. Eric was also supportive of the city's Leadership Academy, where residents came to learn more about their city, Rancho Palos Verdes. Alegria also took part in a piece of the city's great history with the unveiling of a monument for the Gabriolino Tongva Native Americans. Alegria said it was important to recognize the people who came before us and cultivated this great land. During the holiday season, Alegria began a new annual event, which is the city's annual tree lighting. There were many summer concerts in the park, too, that have always been a big hit. Alegria made contributions that will continue, including the creation of the city's first ever Public Safety Division, which will roll out in 2025. And Eric has not done yet. His service will continue on the Palos Verdes School Board, where he will serve the needs of students in our community. Thank you, Eric. You will always be a part of the RPV family. Although, we're not quite sure how you got out of that pie eating contest. Fight on.
Wonderful. So of course, there's many of your friends and family and elected officials here tonight, and I think we'll start with that group. And I know our city clerk is going to go ahead and invite people up to speak. So Terry.
Thank you, mayor. Our first speaker and presenter is Supervisor Janice Hahn.
Hi, Janice. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to honor Eric Alegria. What a wonderful, beautiful family you have here today, who is all in the videos, and they're just such well-behaved children. It was fun sitting behind them in that cheetah coat that she's got. It's fantastic. Do they make it in my size? Eric, I just really wanted to be here tonight to thank you for your for your work and just watching that video and thinking about all the elected officials that served during the pandemic. It's sometime now, it's hard to even remember what we went through. But for an elected official during that time, it took real courage and bravery and calmness and a sense of balancing your community's public safety with the safety of your businesses. And we always seem to walk a real fine line between making sure our businesses thrive while protecting our our public safety. And you did such a good job with that. I'm so pleased with your work on mental health. That's been a big focus of mine as a county supervisor. And the fact that you're going on to the school board is so important and so perfect for you. It'll be such a good fit, because I know you, like me, no matter what job we have, what do people want to know about? They want to know about the schools, right? And it's the same constituents and same children that we serve in our city council and county supervisor jobs. But people care about their schools, and educating our young people is something that we all are invested in. So and I know my friend Susan Brooks would be here if she could. She was always such a supporter of yours, and I know she's thrilled that you're staying in public office and will be a school board member. So on behalf of the 10 million residents of Los Angeles County, they're all here tonight. And they join me in honoring you and commending you for your leadership and your dedicated service to the city of Rancho Palos Verdes.
Wait, one more. Do you want to? All the stuff.
Thank you, supervisor. That was great. Thank you so much. Next.
Our next speaker is Mayor Victoria Lozzi from Palos Verdes Estates.
Welcome, Victoria.
Hi, Victoria.
Such pressure. Good evening.
And congratulations.
I'm the mayor in Palos Verdes Estates. And on behalf of our city, we, you know, I'm going to steal Councilmember Bradley's phrase that we're four cities but one peninsula. And we have so enjoyed, we're sorry, David, we've so enjoyed working with you. We appreciate your work. I mean, when you put it all in one video, my goodness, that's a lot, such accomplishments. So we're pleased to bring you the certificate of recognition, in recognition of outstanding and distinguished service to the city of Rancho Palos Verdes. On behalf of the city council, we thank you for your service, and we're happy that you're continuing in local public service, and we look forward to seeing you on the school board.
Thank you, Victoria. Appreciate it.
I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and wait till, you know, everyone's finished, and then we'll do group photos as well with the whole council. So please don't leave. Next.
Our next speaker is Mayor Belvet Schmidt from Rolling Hills Estates.
Hi, Belvet.
Thank you. No false advertisement. We rotated last night, so I'm Councilmember Schmitz tonight. Congrats. Eric, it has been such a pleasure, not only to call you my colleague, but to also call you a friend. We have had some moments when we've had discussions, and I'm so incredibly grateful for the ways that I have learned from you and the kind of individual that you are. You serve your city and our peninsula with humility. You're a lifelong learner. You are a curious thinker, and you are fiercely devoted to this incredible family and have a lovely partner who you champion every chance you get. And so on behalf of our entire city, our pleasure has been to work with you. Thank you for choosing to give of your time in public service, and we look forward to partnering with you as you enter the school board. Congratulations.
Next speaker is Councilmember Leah Mersch from Rolling Hills.
Hi, Leah. Hi, Leah. Another former mayor.
I think it says a lot that all the former mayors are here from every city that's represented, even Rolling Hills came tonight. Which I'm pleased to be here, and I want to thank you. I can't add anything to what the other people have said and the great video that was presented for you. But it's been a pleasure over the years to work with you collaboratively. We all have many, as we know, common areas of interest, challenges, and successes. And you've been integral, and the whole council has been integral, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I too have admired how everyone on your council has conducted themselves during your meetings. I'm kind of a junkie. I've been watching all of your meetings for the last year.
You're the one.
So and congratulations on and good luck with the school.
Thank you so much for being here.
Next, our city manager will present the certificate from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, as they could not be here this evening.
Yes, thank you. And I'm honored to be reading this scroll from Sheriff Luna, and it's to you, Mayor Protem Alegria. It says, "In recognition of your outstanding leadership as the Mayor Protem of Rancho Palos Verdes, your partnership with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department over the years has proven invaluable. We appreciate your commitment to the residents and the primary role you played in keeping Rancho Palos Verdes safe. The men and women assigned to Lumina Sheriff's Station and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department wish you well in all your future endeavors. Signed, Robert G. Luna, Sheriff."
Next is Board President Bob Hart with the Palos Verdes Library District.
Thank you for coming, Bob.
Hey, Bob.
Good to see you.
Thanks for being here.
Good to see you, too. Well, the we want to make a point that the library serves all four cities, and we couldn't be the organization that we are without the wonderful support from your council and the councils from the other three cities on the hill. And I've really gotten to know you during my term as president of the Board of Trustees, and I'm so happy going to the school board. If you don't know it now, the library provides a lot of support to the school in terms of helping your librarians get what they need and making sure that your students get the books that they need on time, and they have them in the library when they need to do their homework. So we look forward to working with you in the coming years, and thank you very much for your service here. We've got a certificate that says, "In recognition of your leadership, commitment, and dedication serving as a council member and mayor of Rancho Palos Verdes community, the entire Board of Trustees and all the library staff thank you very much."
Thank you so much, Bob.
Our next speaker is Board Vice President Linda Kurt with the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, Linda.
I'm Linda Kurt, and I'm here on behalf of the school board, but I'm also a many, many-year resident of Rancho Palos Verdes. And I so appreciate what you and all of the other council members have done over the last couple of years, but particularly through COVID and with the landslide and installing new city events. And you've done a lot, and you will be very missed. But I am absolutely positively thrilled that I'll be getting to work with you. So goodbye for Rancho Palos Verdes, but welcome to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Next is Senior Field Representative Karen Calderon from Congressman Ted Lieu's office.
Traffic.
I don't see Karen.
Okay. Yeah, we don't see her in the audience.
To District Representative Edward Thieves.
Yeah.
With Senator Ben Allen's office.
Thanks for coming, Edward. Good evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members. I'll keep this brief because you've heard it all from from the lovely mayors and speakers before me. One of the things that stood out to me in your tribute video, Eric, was the through line of education and youth advocacy in everything that you do. And I can think of no better person to move from a job like council member right over to a school board member. It takes somebody very special to give up so much time of your life to the city of Rancho Palos Verdes and say, hold on a second, I'm not done. Now let's do it again, but for all the students. So on behalf of Senator Ben Allen, all of SD 24, and myself personally, I want to say thank you for your public service. Thank you for all you've done for the city, and I wish you the best of luck on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Edward.
Next is RPV liaison Cody Bridges with Assemblymember Almudra Tsuchi's office. Lastly, we did also have a certificate from LA Councilmember Tim McCosker's office, and they sent their request.
Let's do this since both Eric and I are outgoing. Why don't we do a photo with Eric first with the full council and the people that presented? We'll have Eric in the center with you. That way, we know it's his photo versus my photo.
It's our photo, John.
Well, yeah, but the other council members could be.
What makes you think anybody's going to give you anything, John?
We think there's some public members who want to speak.
And we'll come back.
Okay.
I don't think they brought certificates. Sometimes when you do things like the senior. I remember the first time I did this rotation, it was so much chaos. We tried to minimize it.
A lot of that.
Okay, and we understand that there's some members of the public that want to come up and say a few words for Eric as well. So I think, Terry, is that correct? Larry, Larry, you want to come up?
Hi, Larry.
Hello. How about if I just consolidate my comments and save them until after some possible certificates for the mayor right now? So I'll just wrap it up in one.
That works. It's very efficient.
Well done. All right. Are there any other certificates for the Mayor Protem?
There are not.
Okay. Okay. Well, why don't I invite my colleagues to make a few? Okay, well, why don't I invite my colleagues to make a few comments as well? Let's start over here with Councilmember Paul Seo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start off and just say thank you to Eric before, because before I got on council, he came up and he asked me a bunch of, you know, questions about me and he just wanted to know about me. And he gave me a bunch of pointers of what I should do and what I shouldn't do. And it worked out very well. But the biggest thing was Eric was very warm. He was very inviting and he led me through a lot of the things that I didn't know. And I'm very grateful for that. And one of the things that I realized is being on city council, you have colleagues. But now that he's leaving, I'm losing a friend. So I'm sad. Hopefully he can sit out a term and then come back. I don't know if Christine will let him, if the kids will let him. But one of the biggest things that I noticed with Eric is he's a consummate professional and he really deeply cares about the community. And that's something that you can't make up. You can't buy it. You can't, you know, learn it. It's something that's ingrained in him. And I'm grateful that he's staying in the city and he's serving at the school board. So he's going to help us and help everyone in the peninsula. But he's an amazing individual and I'm just going to keep it short because I know I can talk to him and talk about him all night, but I just want to say thank you. And thanks for doing such a wonderful job on city council. Everybody's going to miss you, especially your humor and your smile and your friendship and everything that comes with being Eric. So thank you very much and don't stay out of public service, stay in it. We need somebody like you.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Of course.
Councilmember Bradley.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last several years. One of the high points was getting to know you when I first came on council and then was able to serve as your Mayor Pro Tem when you were mayor a couple of years ago as you were helping lead the city out of the pandemic and COVID shutdown. So that was a really special time. It's been a great pleasure serving with you. I've learned a lot from you. We haven't always agreed on everything, but I think I have always respected your thoughts and really made me rethink some of my thoughts and come to a better conclusion. So thank you very much for your service. I am ecstatic that you're staying on the hill and you're continuing to serve. But then again, you have half the school district living with you, so you know.
I was waiting for the joke. I knew it was coming.
Anyways, it's been a pleasure and good luck in helping serve and provide for our kids on the hill. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, Dave.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Well, what do I say? He's been the best seatmate ever. He makes sure I'm on the right, in the right spot at the right time. It's truly been a blessing to have you on our council. It's been the best of times despite all the things that we've had to deal with. Just being able to work with you has made it not only doable, but enjoyable. And you're going to be missed very, very much.
Thank you so much, Barb.
This is a little bit off script, but I have a feeling that RR, our city manager, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. First, for the benefit of the council and the public, you know, every Wednesday we have our Men the Bend dinners at Ladera Linda for the affected residents. And so we, tonight is the dinner occurs five to seven o'clock and we are streaming live at Ladera Linda. Many of the residents, and tonight is being hosted by the Sea View Residents Association as well as the Council of Homeowners Association. So many of them, your guests who would want to be here are watching. So they're listening and we set it up so if they want to say anything, they could as well. Eric, and I say Eric because you are, you are a friend. And I remember the morning, we were just talking about that and the morning that we met right before I was going to apply for the position of city manager. We had that conversation and some of the things that we talked about. And I didn't know, I had no idea what the journey, I wasn't even sure whether I wanted to even pursue the position of city manager. I didn't have the confidence in, but what I, five years into it, and I can't believe it's been five years and watching that video allowed me to reflect on everything that we've been through. One of the first things I would say, and it was said in the video right at the beginning and it's a true testament, your commitment to your family, to Christine and your four kids. That is one of, your highest priority is Christine and your family and your parents and that is so admirable. And I think all of us who know you, we see that. And I got the opportunity to work really closely with you and really get to know you. And you are such a kind person with, that your heart is in, for people. And you really believe in people, you believe in community and you do what you do because of the people that you are representing and trying to preserve and protect the quality of life and always make it better. And you're the kind of person that just doesn't sit on the sidelines. You get in, you want to do things, you want to get things done. I remember all of our conversations with you, especially when you were mayor, the things that you wanted to accomplish and we worked so tirelessly and hard to make that happen. And we saw the progress and we saw in the video. I just want to say thank you. I'm very excited for you in this next chapter of public service. I know you are really, your heart is in it and I admire that. And the importance of the youth, one of the things that we worked together in mental awareness and the youth and some of the programs we tried to bring and brought to the community. I think you've left an indelible mark on Rancho Palos Verdes and the peninsula and the South Bay and you'll always be remembered for that. So thank you for a great journey.
Thank you, RR.
Thank you. I don't know if our city attorney, because as everyone knows, the only two employees that we have as a council are the city manager and the city attorney. So maybe our city attorney, Bill Winder, wants to say a few words.
I appreciate that opportunity. I'm going to use my little time to talk about two council members in particular, the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. Five years ago, I met them for the first time over lunch at Pastangos in Irvine, trying to get a gig working for Rancho Palos Verdes. And they gave me a little bit of a grilling and the council gave me a shot at it. And it has been my, the professional joy of my life to work for this city. And I have worked for a number of cities over 40 years. And I'm living proof that you can come back after retirement. And so I have appreciated Eric and John and their remarkable intellect and skills and abilities. They are willing to use lawyers appropriately. They listen to advice when it's given and then they make independent judgments based on what they view to be the best interest of the city of Rancho Palos Verdes. So God bless you both. Thank you for your service. Thank you for this privilege you afforded me and I wish you both the very best.
It's been a pleasure, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. All right, with that, we have some presentations to make to the Mayor Pro Tem.
It's beautiful. Thank you. My kids were wondering where in the community this is going to go. I told them, "Probably going to get into the garage." It's beautiful.
I'm going to make a few comments about my colleague. As many elected officials know, they sometimes come into office with an individual at the same time. And it's interesting because in the audience, there's some people that had supported me from the very beginning that, you know, weren't my family necessarily, but just people. And so they're here tonight. But during the journey of running for city council and going to the ALADS, where the sheriff's deputies and trying to get their support, I knew the names, I knew Eric's name because I knew he was running for council at the same time as me. But I had never met him. Like it's one of those things, you hadn't had the opportunity to meet him yet. And so I'm waiting in the lobby at the sheriff's deputy's lounge and he comes in and he says, "You're John Krickshank?" I'm like, "Yeah." He's like, "Here to get their support?" I'm like, "Yep." And it's like, "Good, let's get that together." And this is the type of person he is. It's not a competition for Eric. He wanted to be a part of the Rancho Palos Verdes City Council because he wanted to give back. And you can tell by what's happened over the last seven years. He's given so much back to our community. You saw in the video just a sampling of things that he's done. But I think what he's done the best is, is that he brings people together. Like he doesn't, he doesn't view people based on anything but goodness and the things that others can do for the community as well. And he brings out the best in all of us. You know, we had the great opportunity to hire our city manager, RR, and we knew that giving someone like that a chance would make sense. And boy, were we fortunate. Like he is an absolutely amazing city manager. So that's one thing that you and I together did that I'm certainly super proud about. During COVID, that was a tough time. I know the supervisor mentioned that. And she knows that we contacted her a lot because she was struggling with a lot of things. And she knew that outdoor space was important to us. So both Eric and I were bombarding her with, "Please open our trails and please open, you know, open space." And she did that for us, but Eric was a part of that. And so I'll always treasure that because that was a tough time. And I was thinking, the only thing that happened during Eric's tenure that was semi-bad was Tiger Woods got in an accident. But I don't think he actually ended up in Rancho Palos Verdes. I think he was in Rolling Hills Estate once he...
It's still being debated now.
The lawyers are probably... So, I mean, literally I was thinking about what negative things have, and that was obviously awful. But, you know, Eric, even when things didn't seem great, he always does things with such a smile on his face and let's just get it done. And I always appreciated that. You know, the people on the east side of our town that live off of Western Avenue, both him and I had a real soft spot for them because a lot of them told us, "We don't feel like we're part of Rancho Palos Verdes." Like it seems like two separate cities, like all these things that happen on the ocean side of our city. What happens on Western? We got this terrible traffic. Western Avenue doesn't look good. You know, we could have easily just blamed Caltrans, which is easy. But we said, "We're going to do something for you." And although I can't say that we've yet accomplished everything, I think it's in motion to where traffic is going to be improved on Western. And it's going to, it's going to look great when we're done, when this future council is done with it. And you were the one that spearheaded all that. And so it's all those little things that you did for Rancho Palos Verdes that I think that that's why people love you is because of that. Obviously you have a beautiful family and your family has welcomed my wife Jennifer and I in and we've become very close friends. But it's, that's why I supported you for school board too. You're just a genuine human that cares about your community and is always doing good things. And so people trust you because of that. And so I'm going to miss being on the council with you, Eric, but I'm going to look forward to watching you at the school board meetings, doing a lot of great things with Linda and the rest. Because our school board and our school system is what makes our community really top notch. Like that's why we all love it. So Eric, congratulations on everything and thank you for being my friend.
Thank you, John. Thank you for everything.
Eric, please tell us some words of wisdom, my friend.
I'm really, really touched and quite honored and very humbled by all your kind words. None of this would be possible without you ultimately. So I appreciate the congratulations and the thanks. And I'm very proud of the journey that we've shared with one another. And if you'll bear with me, I do, I do want to make some comments and I do want to thank some people. It's hard to believe that my work with the city actually goes back to 2011. I was pretty new to the community and ran for council at the time and had a great opportunity to meet a lot of wonderful people through that process and really start to get to know the heartbeat of this community. And that led to an opportunity to serve on the Finance Advisory Committee, of course. And then ultimately, the city council, thanks to colleagues who knocked on my door and encouraged me to run in 2017. So I was fortunate from that standpoint, over 13 years, to really be part of this community. I feel like I've had a chance to sort of grow up, become a better leader, become a better dad, a better husband through all those years. And I owe that whole experience to everybody that's in this room. I've gained something from each of you. And there's a lot of things I'm proud of and I appreciate the nice comments, but none of it would have been possible without us working collectively together. So there are some things I just want to mention, some of which Lizzy beautifully has always captured in the video. I was quite moved by the video that you created. But just a lot of great progress for the community. This is, this is our progress as a council and certainly some people I want to thank. But over the last seven years, I set out to hopefully preserve our community, our traditions, our heritage. Sought out to understand that, but also had a desire to move us forward into the years in front of us. And as part of that, we did a lot of wonderful things, our councils. We created annual goals and strategic planning process that hadn't existed, as well as financial planning that to accompany it, to really help us. And I think those are the tools that are going to help us as we look into the future, particularly with the landslide and other major capital investments that the city needs to consider. We sustained a very high level of public safety and became a top five city at one point in terms of our public safety in the community. And as part of that, we did a lot of things. The Ranger Program, the ALPR Program that we were able to continue, Flock Safety Program, using technology and new and innovative ways to continue to incrementally improve how our residents experience safety in their lives here on the Palos Verdes Peninsula. One of the things I'm most proud of, I see Rob out there, Carolyn, our colleagues with the Land Conservancy and all the work we've done in the Preserve and the fact that we were able to accomplish passing the Natural Conservation Plan as well as the Habitat Plan that essentially protects our beautiful Preserve in perpetuity. So the fact that I got to be part of that with all of you is one of my highlights on my time on council. Other progress, of course, this year's been a very challenging one with the landslide. But in spite of that, thanks to the leadership of our council, our mayor, our staff, progress at least has been made, although plenty of work remains as it relates to the wells that were installed, the winterization plan, the new grant program that's going to allow our community to find a feasible way forward for some of the homeowners that are so negatively affected by the landslide in the last couple of years. I'm very proud of the Ladera Linda Community Center. Every time I'm out there and get to see kids playing and generations of families out there, I feel like all the hours and time we've spent together has been well, well worth it. There's lots of other work that I'm proud of. I am very proud of the fact, Bill and RR, as you highlighted, that one of the things I got to participate in was hiring you, RR, to be our city manager and extending your contract for another five years. So although we're leaving, we know that the city is in great hands with our city manager and in great hands with this council and our incoming council members as well. And of course, Bill, as you said, bringing you on as the city attorney for our community and having had the chance and pleasure to work with you has been such a joy. You're a consummate professional, you've been excellent for our community in protecting us from a legal perspective. And I think our city's managed in a very sound and thoughtful way, thanks to, thanks to all of your work and the work of your firm. More than anything, what I'm proud of most, and I look at John and my colleagues, Dave, Paul, Barb, I think of those that came before, of course, Ken and Susan and Jerry and the work that we got to do together. But just the fact that we got to create what I feel is a culture of mutual cooperation. It's because all of us care about the community and we all have the community's best interests in mind. And even at times where we had a different path in mind, the destination was almost always the same and almost always identical. So the fact that our community is recognized and respected for that culture is something that I'm ultimately most proud of. I do want to thank some of those past council members. Janice, you mentioned Susan. Susan was just such a friend to me and it continues to be a wonderful friend to me. She was that council member who knocked on my door in 2017 and said, "You've got to run for this council seat." And she did so much to help me and she really leaned in to make sure that I knew what I was doing and that I was successful. and that I was successful. So, you know, like all of us in this room, I owe a big thanks to a lot of folks. And Susan Brooks is one of those people. Jerry DeHovik was a, a pleasure to work with. His leadership is something I'll never forget. Just watching and observing the way he took our community forward, he led, was something that I always worked to, to emulate in my own way. And so for Jerry's leadership, I'm thankful. And of course, how could you not learn when you're listening to Kendita talk about the history of the community? So a big thank you to Kend for all he taught me about what this community is really about. In my early years on the council, I, I listened very intently to his depiction of what RPV was and also what RPV is. For that, I'm, I'm truly grateful. John, I'm almost at a loss of words because it's just been a complete pleasure and joy. And it's been nothing but a partnership and the work that we've done for the community. We decided very early on that we're going to work tirelessly together. And for that, I think we've done our best work for the community. And I'm quite proud of the legacy that we're going to leave behind together. So thank you for your partnership in that. And of course, Dave, Paul, and Barb. I can walk away with contentment and ease because I know who you are as individuals, as people, and the work that you've done. And I'm truly, truly blessed and honored to have spent the time with you. I'm really going to miss you all. And I know Steve and, and George, you'll in a moment be in these seats. And I'm so thankful that I got a chance to get to know you as friends over the years and do work for the community with you. And I want to assure the community that you are in wonderful hands with George and Steve. They're going to be wonderful contributors to this city council and, and take us forward into the future. Ara, it's, uh, it's hard to say goodbye because I do really consider the work that we've done service. And you see it the same way and you lead with your heart. And for that, I think our community is eternally grateful to you. And I'm personally grateful to you for all that you do to, to help RPV be successful. And particularly for all the work you've done through crises and hard times for the residents of this community. And of course, the team around you. Terry, your compassion is in your light, just as a person. And the work you do is, at times, has been just quiet and behind the scenes. But people should know, we have the best, absolute best city clerk that there is out there. So Terry, you've been such a joy to work with. You don't forget any detail. You consider everything and you work very, very hard, not just to support us, but to support the community that is Rancho Palos Fertiles. And I won't go through each individual, but I want to say collectively, the executive team, those directors and deputy directors and everyone on staff, we have a wonderful team. My task to Ara in that, that meeting that he referenced earlier was, okay, well, you're an individual, good individual contributor. You've led a department successfully. But the mark of real leadership for this community is going to be, can you build a team and develop a team around you? And I look around and I say, job well done to you, Ara, because of the caliber of people that we have here. So thank you to the executive team and everybody in the city for the work that they've done. Challenges, of course, remain. But ultimately, I think we've taken the city forward. I'm proud for that. I, I finally want to just thank the community for their belief and, and me and John and their willingness to vote for us and support us and all the things that they've contributed to us. I wouldn't have made the wisest decisions, I imagine, if it wasn't for the conversations I had with you, those of you in the audience, those of you in the community that have lent, lent your expertise to me and this council over the many years of, of work that we've done together. So it's been really humbling to be able to work with you. I want to thank the other cities. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with our three other cities in the peninsula. Of course, the school, school district, our county supervisor, Janice. It's been a pleasure. Of course, Ben Allen, our, our senator, state senator. And of course, Al Marasucci. I know they're not here tonight, but they've been wonderful partners to us. And I'm sure I'm missing a number of folks. But that collaboration across the different levels of government is what makes this all work. And I really want to acknowledge you, to appreciate and respect you. Oh, I'm missing somebody? Oh, that's coming. I, I do want to appreciate some folks who helped me early on. And they're not here. But one of my great friends, Assembly Member Philip Chen, was a, he went to graduate school together. He's a great friend. He's been a wonderful supporter of mine over the years. And I want to acknowledge him. Former Speaker Anthony Rendon, former Controller and Treasurer, John Chang. Also consider him a wonderful mentor and friend. And many, many who gave, people who gave their time, advice, and all the things that they've contributed to me. I am, to Janice's point, leading in, thankful to my parents. They're actually here in the audience. My dad, Steve, my, my mom, Patty, are in the back for their example. That humility and kindness that I aspire to, to embody came from them. So I, I want to acknowledge them for being here tonight and for all that they did to make their son the best he possibly could be. So thank you, Mom and Dad. Appreciate you.
Excuse me, could I say something to them?
Sure.
He's been wonderful. Thank you so much for letting us have him for this time, which now seems short, but thank you. Just had to--
Thank you, Barb. I appreciate, I'll pay you later. You know, last but not least, of course, my wife, Christine. You know, one of the stories that I quite remember fondly when I was running in my first campaign and, and was that Christine was driving me around pretty pregnant and driving me from door to door, especially in the hilly parts of Rancho Palos Fertiles. So she would drive me up, I would run up the hill, knock on a door, come down. She would drive me right to the next home. And, you know, you were really my first and most important supporter, my love. So I appreciate all that you've done. And the fact that you've been willing to sacrifice to allow me to be part of this community in this way. You deserve all the thanks for that. So thank you. And, and of course, and of course, my, my kids, Amar, Christian, Leila, and Xavier. Amar can't be here tonight, but, you know, I do this because of, of you and the example I hope to set for you. And I, I hope if anything, you continue a legacy in your lives of giving to other people and, and whatever way that ends up being. So thank you for being here, you guys. Thanks for your patience with me all this time, all the nights that I missed homework or reading that last story of the night. I appreciate all your support through all this as well. So ultimately, I gave, but, but I ultimately gained. I had a chance to grow as a person and a leader in RPV. I feel like we started as colleagues, became a community, but ultimately, we became a family. We ended as the RPV family. And for that, I'm truly grateful. I feel so blessed and grateful to have enjoyed this journey with you all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's here for Eric. I asked Eric, did you prepare a speech? He's like, no, I'm just going to wing it. So no pressure on me. So I think I'm turning the meeting over to you--
Yes, sir. Well, appropriately, it's time to, to recognize our good friend, our mayor, John Crookshank. So Liz, I believe we have a video?
So good morning, everyone. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Mayor John Crookshank.
Today, we honor Mayor John Crookshank for his seven years of dedicated service on the Rancho Palos Fertiles City Council. With his USC fight-on spirit, he led RPV through the most difficult times in the city's history. He was mayor when the 2020 COVID crisis hit and mayor again during the ongoing landslide crisis that has wreaked havoc in our city. During the pandemic, the mayor managed the closure and reopening of City Hall and Parks, held the first hybrid city council meeting in the South Bay, supported local businesses with fee waivers, and kept the community connected, hand-delivering meals to first responders and residents. Always advocating for RPV, Mayor Crookshank went full force tackling the landslide state of emergency that began in 2023 due to unprecedented land movement with record rains. He pursued public and private assistance and a state of emergency declaration from the governor. He held numerous meetings, town halls, press conferences, giving landslide tours to county, state, and federal leaders, seeking help and securing a $42 million government buyout program for impacted homeowners. Under his leadership, de-watering wells were recently installed and have helped slow the landslide that has left hundreds of residents without utilities, destroyed homes, roads, trails, and the historic Wayfarers Chapel. Through these historic times, Mayor Crookshank has championed some of RPV's greatest moments that included the grand reopening of Ladera Linda Community Park this year. The park has become a resource for neighbors impacted by the landslide and a beautiful place for all to enjoy. The mayor has reached many milestones, bringing his invaluable civil engineering background every step of the way. He facilitated meetings with engineering firms to help remediate land movement. He pushed forward critical infrastructure projects, including Phase One of the Civic Center Master Plan, Western Avenue Improvements and Storefront Grant Program, and Pano AI Wildfire Detection Cameras to protect the entire peninsula. The mayor supported additional public safety resources and increasing sheriff's patrols in landslide-affected neighborhoods. This year, the city's housing element received state approval and a balanced budget was passed during all seven years of his tenure. The mayor advocated use of native plants and fuel modification efforts in the Preserve and Open Spaces. Over the years, the mayor has helped make our city safer, stronger, more sustainable, always pushing for local control. He's been an innovative problem solver, listening to residents, working with staff, representing RPV on boards and regional committees, including chairing the South Bay City's Council of Governments. As for his greatest days in government, the mayor celebrated RPV's 50th anniversary and first drone show, signed the Sisters City Agreement with Sakura City, Japan, honored hundreds of citizens, won every pie-eating contest except for one, crossed the 100 miles finish line twice, and for the first time, barreled through the snow at the city's tree lighting ceremony just held on December 6. Now, on December 11, Mayor Crookshank finishes his two-term run on the city council. And we look back to the day he was first sworn into office seven years ago to remember why he wanted to serve.
Here's my political inspiration, my mom, Jan. She still lives in El Segundo where I grew up. And she was on the school board for nine years when I was growing up and Sean's age. So she was my inspiration. So I love you, Mom. Thank you.
We thank Mayor John Crookshank and his family for years of dedication, hard work, extraordinary public service, and an unwavering commitment to RPV. Fight on.
If that weren't enough, we have many folks that want to say a few words. Terry?
Thank you. Supervisor Janice Hahn.
John. So I was one of those that endorsed you the first time you ran. My friend, once again, my friend Susan Brooks. She said, I, this is a great guy. You, you have to support him. I didn't really know you, but I took her a word for it. And I supported you, went to your victory party the night you won. And then you repaid me by-- No. That was then. This is now. But, you know, it's, that was a great video. And again, for you to be mayor in 2020 and begin uncharted pathways, I believe you and I were at the same event that year, which sort of started, was a little bit of a ground zero for the, the COVID virus. And again, we were all in complete uncharted territory. None of us really knew. Are you trying to say--
I was going to say, do you think it was the cake or the microphone?
It was the microphone.
See, because I think it's the cake because you talked in the microphone.
And I didn't get it, yeah.
And, but did you have cake?
I did not have cake.
There you go. It's the cake.
Oh, it's the cake. Okay, we, we solved it. But, you know, I think your, your leadership during 2020 was so important for your city, just to guide them through that. And then, of course, you've been mayor this, this past year as your, your city faced unprecedented difficulties. Again, knowing the land movement was happening all these years did not change the fact that the acceleration was so great and so difficult for your residents to manu, to maneuver. Your calmness, again, every time you had a press conference, you gave your residents hope. You gave them ideas, some were good, some were not so good. But you, you, you gave them a reason to trust you and to trust this city. And I think that's important anytime. We don't really know what our residents are going to go through. We don't really know what's around the corner in terms of any kind of challenge. But those that we serve always want to hear from us, some sense of hope and some sense of calmness and some sense of, we've got your back. And that's really what you always did. I will say it, you know, I got to be really honest. Well, I'm not going to be too honest tonight, but I will be honest about, you know, I was a little, I was a little mad at you when you stood at that golf course and stood next to Donald Trump with your MAGA hat. But after November, I ain't mad at you anymore. In fact, I think you are in a great position to maybe really get the help from this new administration that your city desperately needs. And I think your political perspective and keenness and strategy could really benefit your city. And I hope you always remember all of us as you navigate the next four years with the federal government. And I think you're in a great position. And we appreciate that about you. And I think if you can use your same political strength to really get help from our federal government for your city in a way that has not been forthcoming so far, I think your, your residents will benefit and we all will. So again, on behalf of the 10 million residents of Los Angeles County and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, John, I commend you for your leadership and dedicated service to the city of Rancho Palos Fertiles.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
Our next speaker is Mayor Victoria Lozey from Palos Fertiles Estates.
Good evening--
Thank you for being here.
Of course. I wouldn't have missed it. So of course, I'm here representing City of Palos Fertiles Estates to thank you for your, just all these years, collaboration, partnership, and, and your service to, to our entire peninsula community. But I also, on a personal note, want to thank you. A couple of years ago, I went on the board of South Bay COG when you were serving as chair. And that's an intimidating organization if you're walking in cold off the street. And I always appreciated that, how much time you took to make sure I felt up to speed and I knew what the issues were. And, and, and I just think that's the kind of leader you are and just always reaching out to make sure that everybody is included and everybody is comfortable with where they are with, with whatever issue they're facing in front of them. So that's my personal thank you. But again, on behalf of Palos Verdes Estates, we thank you for your partnership and everything you've done for this community the last seven years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Velveth Smith from Rolling Hills Estates.
You got your title.
For adjusting my title.
Right, you got your title. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, well, so we had the privilege of starting out as colleagues in 2017. But in 2020, you became my friend. When we served as mayors together, I knew the kind of individual that you are, the kind of character that you have, and your unwavering support for people, the community. I have to say that I always learned from you how to be inclusive and gracious and thoughtful. We have fiercely disagreed on some things. We have fighting words because I'm a golden bearer, and you went to the other school here in Los Angeles.
It's Jennifer's father that played on the last Cal Rose Bowl team, 1959.
I know.
Her father.
Which is why I love you. And I really appreciate the way that you have chosen to serve as a public servant. We have things in common in that we both are heads of our businesses, and a lot of the pressure that falls on us. But truly, what I most admire is, in the moment of great crisis, you have emerged as someone who is equanimous, thoughtful, compassionate, innovative. You are not afraid to seek solutions and to question. You are an incredible strategist. And I really appreciate the way in which you have chosen to lead. The most fun, the public will never know because post Seven Chips at the Red Onion, you are a hoop. For those of you who don't know, he limits himself to six chips, which is very disciplined. But really, truly, you have been a wonderful friend, both during the pandemic, when there were some dire things, and then again, this past year as you faced different things. The city of RPV is so incredibly fortunate to have you. And selfishly, I am so grateful to call you my friend. So thank you for your service.
Velveth, thank you so much.
Councilmember Leah Mersch with Rolling Hills.
Speaking twice in one night.
I know, Leah.
It's a big night.
I can't, again, so many things have said, so many people have said so many wonderful things about you, all of which are true. I don't live in your community. It's a beautiful community. I have so many friends that do. And as I've said, I've become a junkie by watching your meetings all the time. But many of you may not know that John Velveth and I served as mayors together both cycles around. So for two times, we're on the same cycle. So we got to deal with the same challenges. And what I've appreciated with John is, this year especially, we were all kind of united on COVID. Everybody was affected the same way. We've been in positions where we have common problems. Everybody on the peninsula has the problem with water in different degrees, all of the communities. John has tried to work with us. The four mayors get together separately from the regular mayor's luncheons, monthly mayor's luncheons with the school board and the library district. And we've really tried to do a big-picture solutions or brainstorming. His engineering-type brain, he doesn't think outside the box, but he really likes to push the envelopes of the box to make the box bigger. You know, he knows as a councilperson, you can't really go outside the box. We shared a lot of discussions regarding, that attorneys say this, but, you know, maybe you can look at it a different way or something. We've just been able to, in places where our communities have been able to work together, but yet there are some places where we just can't. We're different cities, and we have different positions on things. There's been a mutual respect, but never that we couldn't talk. I never felt that I couldn't, you know, say, "Come and take a look at that," or that he would say, "Come and take a look at this and see what we can do." And I don't know that that could have happened anyplace else. The small area that we have has really made it an ability for us to be able to do that. And as I've watched all your meetings, I can see that I looked at them both as a fellow elected, seeing how you collectively handled the issues with the public. You were responsive to them. Some of your meetings were very challenging, and you were always respectful. And as an elected, I say, gee, that's how I would like to be able to conduct myself. I've learned that from you and have been appreciative of that. And even when we've disagreed with things, I've always felt that if I lived in RPV, when I look at how this council and John has handled things, even though there are people that are not happy with certain things, you've been available to them. I get a feeling, as Janice said, when you do your public service announcements and your different interviews and stuff, I felt that you were being honest and you were informative and transparent. And I think that's really important. So I admired you both as a fellow elected. And if I lived in this city, I would think you'd all have done an excellent job under really hard circumstances. So thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Next, City Manager Maranian will read the certificate from the LA County Sheriff's Department.
And, Mr. Mayor, I should say, and also the mayor pro tem, that I spoke to the captain earlier today, and she sends her regards. She actually really wished that she could be here, but the Lumina Station is conducting their event this evening. And so she did want me to express her appreciation and really her respect for you and all that you do for the community and public safety. But I'm gonna read the scroll from Sheriff Robert Luna, similar to what I did for Mayor Pro Tem. So it's, "The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department presents this certificate to John M. Crookshank, Mayor, City of Rancho Palos Verdes. In recognition of your outstanding leadership as Mayor of Rancho Palos Verdes, your partnership with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department over the years has proven invaluable. We appreciate your commitment to the residents and the primary role you played in keeping Rancho Palos Verdes safe. The men and women assigned to Lumina Sheriff's Station and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department wish you well in all your future endeavors. Signed, Robert G. Luna, Sheriff."
Next is Board President Bob Hart with Palos Verdes Library District.
Thank you. Hey, John.
Bob, thank you for being here. Bob shows up at so many events. He's great. Thank you.
Well, as I said, one of the things is that people at those events are really great people, so it's fun to go. But also, the library services the entire community, and so we think it is important to show up. You know, my first term as a trustee started in 2019. And probably like most of you, when you started as a city council, you had things that you wanted to get done. And all of a sudden, 2020 comes along. And I have been so impressed with the way that you and your council and all the other councils have worked together cooperatively to do the best possible in very, very difficult times. I know we had long lines of people at the library who would order books online, and then they'd come by and we'd put them in their trunk. But everybody did their part to try to keep the community knowledgeable that we, as elected officials, were doing what we could during that very difficult time. And now, you're mayor again. And, you know, another tragedy. I don't know if it's connected, but...
Dave reminds me of these things all the time.
But I really think that you've been terrific in terms of what everybody else has said about taking a rational, calm, supportive approach to these events and not letting things overwhelm you, which isn't always easy. You know, for those of you who have never done it before, trying to effectively work in an elected body is so much different than my experience as being in a business where somebody was actually in charge. And so it's a learned art. And you all do it, I think, extremely well. And you do it very well, John. It's been a pleasure to know you and to get to learn from you. And I wish you well in all the things that Janice thinks you're gonna be doing over the next several years. But thanks a lot.
Thank you, Bob.
From the library trustees and all the library staff, this is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of your leadership, commitment, dedication to serving the city council on the city council and as mayor of Rancho Palos Verdes since 2017. Thanks very much for your service.
Thank you.
Next is Board Vice President Linda Kurt with the Palos Verdes Peninsula School District.
Linda, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm still Linda Kurt. I'm still an almost 40-year resident of RPV. And just like I said to Eric, we appreciate all of the things that you as a council and you as a person have done for our city the last number of years. Our community definitely feels stronger than it did in terms of relationships and interconnectedness than it did 10, 20, 30 years ago. So thank you for that. As a school district member, I started off as a teacher. I was proud to teach your child and to know you as a parent. And to see that evolve and now be a peer and to see you at all of these social events and to learn about seismic safety from you. I see we have many, many different ways that we've connected over the years and I'm sure will continue to do so. And I appreciate your service, and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And earlier, we did note that LA Councilmember Tim McCosker, as well as Congressman Lou's office, sent certificates. So next up, we will have District Representative Edward Feves with Senator Ben Allen's office.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Wouldn't have missed it if I wanted to, which I don't. What I will say is that in the short time that I have gotten a chance to know you, Mr. Mayor, I have been so impressed by your leadership, by your presence, by just the energy that you bring to everything that you do in your day-to-day job. I'm sure that when you got first elected in 2017, you were not expecting to preside over two once-in-a-generation challenges. But if there's anyone who has been able to advocateally represent and advocate for the city of Rancho Palos Verdes in such a manner that leaves no stone unturned, no door unopened, I think it's you. I think you've done an incredible job with the shorthand that you've been dealt. And I've learned something tonight. Maybe don't bet against Mayor Crookshank in pie-eating contests, marathons, city responses, pretty much anything. If there's anything that I've learned is that if there's something going on, I think I should be calling Mayor Crookshank. On behalf of Senator Ben Allen, all of SD 24, and myself personally, thank you very much for your personal service. And I'm sure this is not farewell. But if there's anyone who does deserve to kick back and relax, it's you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have liaison Cody Bridges with Assemblymember Almira Tsutsuchi's office.
Hey, Cody.
Hey, Cody.
Good evening, Mayor Crookshank, Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, Aura, city staff. I'm really sorry I'm late. And I missed your presentation, Eric. So, John, if you don't mind, I'm actually gonna direct my comments to both of you. I started at the same time as you guys, actually. I started with Assemblymember in 2016, took my oath in December of 2017. And I feel like I've really seen the growth and the progress that you both have made over the years throughout my time with the assembly. And I actually lived in RPV for two years. And you two were my mayors, actually. So I feel a certain connection with you both. And Assemblymember Merschutji asked me to be here tonight to thank you both for your service. He wanted to be here tonight, actually. Fortunately, he's in DC right now, taking care of their business. But I have two certificates of recognition. And I'll only read one of them because it's the same language. "In recognition of your outstanding leadership as mayor/mayor pro tem and with sincere appreciation for your dedication to the city of Rancho Palos Verdes." Thank you so much for your service.
Now, the fact that they were both your mayors was not the reason you left, is it?
Sorry, but what was that?
The fact that they were both your mayors wasn't the reason you left RPV, was it?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Oh, Dave, I'm gonna miss your jokes. Okay.
Next mayors, and then when you came in as mayor, that's when he left. Oh, makes much more sense now, doesn't it? Actually, I think we should get our photo in. So all of those that came and spoke tonight, if you could come up for... No, all of us as councilmembers will have a chance to speak and say a few words about John in just a moment.
We have to talk about John.
We do.
So Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I was contacted by KNX News Radio, who couldn't be here tonight, but they wanted to congratulate John as the most quoted public official of 2024.
That's very apropos. We do have a few ceremonial matters in terms of the sign.
Yes, yes.
So, John?
My name is so big that there is a tiny little court.
Crookshank Court. But at least they didn't have to do word wrap. Beautiful plaque for your dedication and service to our community. And as the mayor sits down from that, I'd love to get comments from our council.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. John, John, John. What I want to say about John is this. And when I was new on council, I had a long conversation with John. And one thing that I learned from John is John's very inclusive. He's very, very inclusive. And he was very encouraging. He always did it with a smile. And he always gave us room to speak our voice. And I think that was very important, especially for the new guy on the council. You know, usually, we get hazed because I've heard previous stories from these guys about them coming on city council. But John was always gracious. And he always gave us the room to make sure that our voices were heard. So I'm thankful for that, John. Thank you very much for leading in that way. And, you know, you set a tone for the entire council. When I came on before, there was some stories of, I guess, horror stories about not getting along and things like that. And I was kind of warned. But when I came on, everybody got along very well. And through John's leadership and through the other council members, we were able to create a city council that I think worked very well together. And we were very cordial, very professional. We had great debates. Everybody was respectful, respected each other's opinions. And for a lot of the votes, And for a lot of the votes, I think there were a lot of votes that were 5-0, which is pretty rare, I think, so.
Not all the votes.
Not all of them. But they're pretty good. And in that sense, you know, you created an environment to work together and to work to one common goal. And one thing that never questioned was your love for the community. And that's something that you can't make up, and that's something that I saw, and I appreciate that. I'm pretty sure the city appreciates it as well. And through your leadership, we were able to get through a lot of things in this community up till now, and hopefully we can carry that torch and continue it. So, I just want to say thank you for serving with your heart and putting in so much time and energy to make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So, John, this is going to be from the heart, and it's going to be 100% serious.
No way.
So, my first experience with Mayor Crookshank was he was wearing tight, short, white, or tight, black spandex shorts, black knee-high socks, and was reffing soccer. I saw that and go, I need to follow in his footsteps. I then started coaching AWESO soccer and then became a soccer ref. Couple of years later, I got appointed to the planning commission. John took me under his wing once again, and we served on the planning commission together, had a great time doing it. Two engineers on the planning commission, what could go wrong? John was chairman of the planning commission and was elected mayor, which was a great thing on his first try. And he just told me, watch out, because the planning commission is a gateway drug, and it is a gateway drug. I gave him a bad time for resigning off the planning commission early because he got elected to city council. I called him a quitter. Unbeknownst to me, two years later, I resigned from the planning commission because I got elected to city council.
And what did I call you?
Quitter. We're both alumni of USC. John graduated undergrad with a degree in engineering before I graduated from USC. So, once again, John was blazing a trail. On city council, he blazed a trail. We have this wonderful belt sitting in front of us where we started during the pandemic a pie-eating contest. Well, four years in a row, John beat the pants off me. Finally, I won the last year. Once again, John blazed a trail. What I want to know, since I followed in your footsteps on everything for the last 15 years, what's going to be next? Because I need to figure out what I'm doing next. But, John?
Why don't we relax during December and just a little bit?
Okay. John, you've been a mentor, a partner, a foil to bounce ideas off, sometimes being the two engineers on a committee. We have a tendency to geek out. We have a great time. We joke. You have been an inspiration in leading the city through some really tough times, both the pandemic, which you had the unfortunate time of presiding over the city as we entered the pandemic, and now with the unprecedented land movement. But there has never been a person more qualified, a steadier hand to help the city through those major challenges. And I think the city has shown that we are an amazingly resilient 45,000 people being led by you, and I think the city could not have been in better hands through those crises and for the last 15 years that you have been volunteering for the city. So, thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Barb?
Well, I don't know how to follow that. I don't have any funny stories to tell. But I want to thank you very much for when I had the stroke and I came back and I couldn't drive yet, that you were willing to take me home from every meeting. And actually, it was so enjoyable. We just kept doing it until the last meeting. And I don't know what I'm going to do without you. But I feel like... No comments, please. I feel like that this particular council, all five of you, or five of us, have worked together so well. And I think that was a lot of that was you. And it's different, and it's been such a privilege because, as you know, I served a long time ago, and I didn't have the kind of people that are on this council. And it was much more difficult. And this council has been wonderful to be a part of, and you've made it that way. And I'm anxious to see what you're going to do next, because you'll probably be in Washington helping the president out. So, who knows? But thank you for everything that you've done for RPV, because we appreciate that, and the people of RPV appreciate that more than I think you even know.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Well, Ara, before I speak, would you like your opportunity? I see you getting ready.
I would love to. Yes, I would love to. And I want to first say for both the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, this is a very bittersweet ceremony. And we're very happy for both of you, all of us, the executive team. I mean, we've been talking about this for weeks now, but it's bitter because I think what we've experienced over the last five years as a council and as how you've served and represented yourselves to the community is really reflective of the two of you, not all five of you, but particularly the two of you. So, I just wanted to say that to both of you. To John, we go back 26 years, a long time. And I know we've said this before, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say it here tonight. We go back to 1998, 1999, where we worked. You didn't even live in the city. You were working as a contract engineer for Public Works, and we were fortunate to work on a particular project in the city on a cul-de-sac design. And we spent many, many meetings collaborating, presenting, redesigning, and all these calls. And who would have known 26 years ago, our path would lead us to this point? And then you moved to the city. I remember you came to the planning department and you spoke to me. You said, hey, I'm looking at moving. I'm buying this house. Let me know. Can I look at the files? And then you were on the planning commission, and as Councilmember Bradley was mentioning, those overlapping years that you were on the planning commission, I was the community development director, and we went through a lot. And again, who would have ever known where we would have landed? And then 2020 came along, and I was interviewed, and you and Eric amongst the council came to my office and told me that you are offering me the position, and that has forever changed my life forever. And I don't think I'll ever forget, and you and the whole council for that opportunity. But what stands out the most is these five years and everything that we went through. And I think it was weeks after I was named city manager, we went into a shutdown. And I, newly city manager, you know, what do I do? How do I navigate through this? And you actually came down, I think it was like a week later, you came down with COVID and how you pushed yourself through that and how you stood for the community and really wanted to understand. And what I observed in you carried through all these years that you served on the council and that we worked together and that partnership that year in 2020 continued to 2023, 2024, and what we dealt with, with the landslide. You are so committed to the community, so committed to public service. All five of you are so accessible and are so responsive. I send out an email and you quickly respond. And, John, you have looked to find solutions and break barriers and try to get us to a point to really help the community navigate through this. I mean, you have, you're out there, and I don't think anyone in the public knows how much you go out and who you talk to, and you're constantly making connections and bringing those connections to the city. And we're introducing us to new technology. I think we're very fortunate that you were an engineer and were exposed to all these contacts, and I think that helped us to get to this point. And as City Attorney was saying, every time I'm driving the car and I've got KNX on, I'm hearing a soundbite, and I'm smiling, that's our mayor. And the other thing is, you've always been very welcoming. And I think it was something I saw in you in 2020, is when we went into the shutdown and we had to go hybrid, and how important it was for you to make sure the public could be heard and the public was participating. And that's always been all five of you, but particularly you, John, making sure that public participation is paramount and first and foremost, and being transparent and being honest. You have left an indelible mark on the community, similar to Mayor Pro Tem, and you've left an indelible mark on my life. So, thank you for a wonderful journey. I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss both you and Eric, but I do consider both of you friends. I really do. I sincerely and genuinely mean that. And I know, when I was reading Sheriff Luna's words here and on your future endeavors, I know there's a very bright future for you. You're destined for it. So, congratulations.
Thank you so much. John, I'm fortunate that I get the final word. A lot's been said, and I'll be brief, but I'll say, I think of...
I don't know if you want to have the final word after we've had some public comment. I think there's some public speakers?
Oh, there are a couple of public speakers for the mayor?
Our first speakers, Raquel Brown.
I'm glad you did. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, yes, please.
Yes, please.
Welcome back, Larry.
Good evening, Mayor Crookshank. Last time I'm going to say that. Good evening, council, staff.
Don't call me that after tonight. This John is good enough.
Okay, excellent. What a deal. Ara said, since this was a special night, to limit my comments to 20 minutes or so. So, have a seat, relax. I have no certificate to give, no street sign to give you, but what I can is speak for residents of the city, and what I say comes from the heart. You are both two very different individuals. You have different perspectives, different ways of looking at things, different ways of approaching the issues. You have some things in common, though. Your families. You care about families immensely. You care about the community. You care about the city. And importantly, you really care about the residents here. When you both came on the council in 2017, you signed up for a job and you did the job. You put in the time, the effort, the study, the reading of the reports, the researching of whatever the issue is, listening to people and listening and listening and listening, whether it be in person or at a council meeting, discussing things with them and knowing what the community members really, really want, and that is so important. This job can be done without doing that, but the job wouldn't have been done well. And you both really put in the time from day one up until now to do the effort to resolve the issues and make the community as best as possible. I appreciate that immensely. On behalf of the residents, we appreciate that immensely. You're great communicators, very, very responsive. When someone reaches out to you, you respond right back. As that people said, you've made yourselves available to the residents. There's a lot of things that are taken away from your tenure on the council that other people can hope to instill in future council members. A lot of really good traits that you have done. So, again, I appreciate what you have done. I will note for our new council members coming on board, I would just ask them to jump right in. No need to put your toe in the pool to test the waters. The water's chilly. It's cold. Too bad. Jump right in. The faster you get caught up to speed on all of the issues...
Larry, don't tell them that yet. They haven't said yes yet.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to get ahead of myself. The faster you get caught up on the issues, the better our community is going to be. And that's always a challenge for new council members. You have three council members that are more than willing to help you get as caught up as fast as you possibly want, because the council has strength at five, and that's what we want. We have a dedicated staff here that is more than happy to make themselves available to our new council members to get up to speed quickly. So, take advantage of all these people, because the strength in our council, we want to maintain for the next cycle as well. So, again, thank you, John. Thank you, Eric. Fantastic job. And again, thank you for putting in the time and the effort, doing what you agreed to do before you ran. Thank you so much, and I wish you both the best.
Thank you so much, Larry.
Speaker is Raquel Brown.
Hi, Raquel.
Good evening, everyone. As a resident, as well as a past committee chair and vice chair of the finance committee, and someone who was a newbie, new to the city and just jumped in, I appreciate you always really listening and allowing us to be innovative. Sometimes when, you know, we were, George and I, George is going to be sworn in, we came in together. And so, both of us were new, and sometimes, probably most times, we would say, well, we think we should do this, or let's think about this. And you all were always open, and I really do think that it shows in the results that were shown on your tribute, and that is that you respected those that were selected, their ideas, and it also, I think, paid off with the executive team, because I think that it allowed them to know that it was okay to bring different ideas to the council and sometimes even to the city manager. And so, as a committee person, what I think I felt was that your leadership of collaboration, you demonstrated. Oftentimes, people say it, but they don't walk the walk. And so, it's interesting to hear tonight, John, someone saying you stretched the envelope, because I felt that. You know, I knew you were an engineer, but I also always thought, well, John will say, yeah, there's a box, but let's set that aside and see what else we can create. And so, I appreciate that. I think as the residents, we benefited from that, and so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nikki Nuschka?
Hi, Nikki.
Good evening, Nikki. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you, particularly Mayor Crookshank and Mayor Pro Tem Alegria, for what you have done over the last year in terms of helping us, most recently with some of the activities with the landslide. So, I wish you well. I do have to mention something about Mayor Crookshank, though. So, as fellow engineers, it really... Bless you. It was really heartening to be able to converse with you on some of the issues that are going on with the landslide and for those of us who are affected. But last week, there was a call with CPUC. And as you know, many of us who are affected, including myself, with loss of gas and electricity, there was a public commenting, and we called. And who was the person before us? It was Mayor Crookshank advocating for us. So, I want to thank you, and I wish you well, and hope that you will continue to support... um and hope that you will continue to support us um um as a as a private citizen, whatever takes you in the future. Um, I also would like to welcome the two new uh elected council members. And we look forward as a community to work with you. Um, and I would also um finally like to say that I know there is a mayoral transition that is going to be taking place. And um I hope that um those of you who will be voting will consider someone who has worked tirelessly on our behalf and has helped us uh throughout this process and um has been there for us, advocating for us. So um, thank you and uh wish you well.
Thank you.
No further speakers. Okay. Well, thank you to everyone for your comments and your patience. I know it's a long review, but worthy of celebration of my colleague here in this council's transition in a moment. Uh, just quickly, it's been said, John, but um I'll just use two two words to describe you, authentic and an advocate. A lot of the the folks that spoke mentioned both of these. Your sincerity of heart, your willingness to do what it takes. Um, you've proven time and time again for this community and all those that are fortunate to call you a friend, that you are willing to do anything to help the people around you, anything. And you've done that. You did it through the coronavirus and those really, really dicey, difficult uh initial months where as a society, we were all adapting and trying to figure out how to move forward. And you've done it again with this very, very complex issue. Uh, we were told when we got elected, this is a small community. There might be simple issues. No, there's been really big, complex issues uh for our community. And for the fact that you've led us through two of those is a testament to you and your steady hand and your leadership. And for that, our whole community should be eternally grateful. Um, most importantly, it's been a, it's been a joy to get to know you and your lovely family. And I appreciate the service that you've provided this community. And it's been an absolute joy to be your partner through all that over the last seven years.
One of your final uh items um in your positions is to certify the election resolution.
Don't we let the mayor have a counterpoint to that?
And and I don't have prepared remarks, and I'm gonna make it very brief because I it is getting late. But I did want to, is this the right time?
Yes, yes, of course. I didn't give the mayor an opportunity to speak, so let's.
To have his comments is what I was talking.
I could just thank my wife and son and leave.
We should, we should be thanking them for loaning you to us all these years.
I will say that all the comments from all you was is very humbling. And, you know, I, those of you that know me, I'm I'm not a big, I'm not great at hearing compliments. I I love helping people and and that. And sometimes hearing those things, it's, you know, it's, of course, it's awesome to 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 hear them, but I always feel very humble. So thank you for that. And Eric, thank you for the journey we've taken together. I very much appreciate that. You had an opportunity to see my mom during the video. She is ninety-five. She's still living in El Segundo. She was my inspiration for being involved politically. She was a school board member for nine years while I was growing up. And so I I see a lot of parallels with with the Alegria family. Um, so, you know, having parents that are inspirations to you and many of us end up doing professionally and 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 I guess community wise, the things that our parents and and people around us do that we saw as kids uh growing up and the the impact that it has by not just having a professional career and doing the things to help you provide for your family, but also having the opportunity to be able to give back to your community. There is no greater purpose for me in life. Um, I I think about the Palisver East Peninsula, and I love the fact that there's four cities that really get along. And I I love this, the, you know, the four cities, one peninsula that Dave talks about all the time. And and you saw the the members of the other three cities over here. And and literally Leah Mers, she's not some from Rolling Hills. She's, for her to be out here tonight means a lot uh because, you know, she she's an amazing leader, but she's not a politician. And so um, that that says a lot. Many of you know, I actually grew up in the city of El Segundo. I was actually born in Inglewood and uh lived in Westchester. My family actually got their house got uh taken through eminent domain by the airport. When I was a kid, my mom actually was part of a group called the Watchful Eye, um, when the Concorde, many of you might remember, old enough to remember, the Concorde jet and the amount of noise that that was gonna make and bring to the Los Angeles area. And her and the group fought against that. And and I was actually a prop as a little kid. My, there's a newspaper article with me with headphones on. You know, the poor kid gonna hear this supersonic airplane. And they fought the this, you know, big corporation in the airport, and they actually won that fight. And so you can see that the things that the community does make a difference. You know, I see Nikki come up and her and all the people from the landslide. I feel so horrible for them all the time, and I know she knows that. And and my colleagues feel the same way, and we want to do everything for them, and sometimes we can't um do everything. Um, but I guess my point is that, you know, we we can come from humble beginnings. And and when you grow up in El Segundo, it's a middle class city. I guess there's a lot of wealthy people there now. But when I grew up there, it was more like Mulberry and, you know, my my family, both parents worked. And it was, you know, you looked at a place like the Palisver East Peninsula and you said, you know, you, this is a place where you've gotta play by the rules and work hard, and eventually you you can be in a place like this. It's kind of the American dream. And and we've had a lot of things happen to us since I've been on the council, like we talked about COVID. But all of you, you know, everyone in the world went through COVID. Uh, but the landslide is something very unique to our city, and we've gone through that as well. Uh, but just having the opportunity to grow up there and being able to, you know, work hard, work for other people, eventually start my own company, and then to live here in I consider the greatest place in the world. I, it's just been a real privilege for me. You know, that that those sort of things. And and you know, thinking back about soccer, you know, it's a real honor to represent people, but it's an honor to be on the AYSO Region Ten Board. It's an honor to, you know, be able to lead kids and to have fun every week in their soccer games, just simple things like that. And it's kind of an honor to wear down your tires, driving around the hill, getting the game. And I can't imagine what Eric's gas and tire bills are. And Christine, of course. Yeah, I'm sure it's amazing. And all the parents here go through that. So I I think for me, I'm, I think the key for for why this works up here is that even though you have people that are part of different political parties, we throw all that stuff away. I mean, I think what we've learned is is that we respect each other. I've told people that the easiest job is being a council member because we have the smartest people in the world and we have the greatest staff in the world that that come here and and give us their wisdom. And we basically just have to listen to them. And if you don't listen to them, you don't, you don't hear it. And I think that's what we do so well as a team up here. We listen to each other. We listen to the staff. We listen to the residents. We listen to the businesses. I see my friend Rudy Savornich back here. He he helped me with my campaign. And and, you know, here's a guy that was a council member in Los Angeles and a business owner, and he's just a friend. Like, he he's back there and he's here supporting me. And I just, it just is very humbling. I see my friends Lee and Christine Williams, and they have gone through so much, you know, living in the Seaview area. And and I know that, you know, they they could have easily, they could easily just be somewhere else. And but they're they're here supporting me, and that just means so much to me. And, you know, Scott Carter sitting next to him, hiding over there. But there's so many people in the audience that that that, you know, and and people that are out there in the community that meant so much to me. I, you know, for my colleagues, my friend Barbara Ferraro, she's a real mentor and inspiration to me. Um, yeah, sometimes we take things too serious, and she puts the world back in perspective, you know, just being caring. You know, sometimes that's all it is. You don't have to outsmart people. Sometimes it's just enough to be caring. Eric Alegria, we've said so much about him, but, you know, thank you, my friend, for everything. You know, this is the guy that's, you gotta watch his career. He, well, actually, his wife probably would be the one that will be our president of the United States soon.
That's true.
She is so smart. And and Paul, I mean, and what you said is so wonderful. Um, we have differing opinions, but you and I respect each other so much. And and, you know, you you've accomplished so much, and I know the community really respects you, and you're a great leader yourself. And and so thank you for all your friendship and and wisdom. And then, of course, my my crazy, like, brother from another mother or whatever you'd say. I, you, this is the thing about when you've got a serious group of elected officials. I mean, we're just people, you know, we're just one of you. We 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 were fortunate enough to, you know, get elected. But at the end of the day, this guy and I, we jump in these crazy, like, bounce houses. I'm sure there's every germ in the world inside of them. Um, he he's willing to, you know, challenge someone. I've always been good at pie eating. And he's literally allowed me to destroy him, but until the end, like, he's a really good, he's a good learner and listener. And and so, and last time he beat me fair and square, and I was so proud of him. It was just, it was terrific. Um, and then, you know, of course, my my son, I don't know if you know my son, he actually is in that other room. His name's Sean. I, um, he's the guy with the beard. He's probably the only one with the beard in there, right? Yeah. Um, anyhow, he's went through Penn High, and he's a great product of the school district here. Great, great heart, great mind. And um RPV TV, thank you so much for taking him under your wing. And and he's, he loves what he does with you guys. Thank you for that. My friend Ara, um, Ara kind of told you the history of how long we've known each other. But I I'm, I'm just so fortunate to be on the city council that hired you to be our city manager. When I'm out and about talking to people, the love and devotion for you is is genuine. Is genuine because you you are, you honestly confront people when they need to be told things. You don't ever back down from situations. You find the right people to help you. Your amazing team of people, um, the the staff that work with you. We have a hundred people that work in our city staff for forty-two thousand plus people. Think of that. A hundred people and the things that they do. It's just absolutely incredible. And you all should be very proud of the work you you all do. Um, Bill, you've become my friend and you're the the wise lawyer, but uh, you know, I like it because you you just say things like what you mean, and you don't beat around the bush. And that that's true with all the staff that's here. All of you are very honest with each other. And then I guess finally, my my wonderful wife, Jennifer, my love of my life. She's always been uh supportive of all the meetings and late nights and running for other offices and and all the things I do. But she she knows that I'm doing it because I do love my community and I love, you know, not just my family, but I love all you. I mean, I I think that it's important that that we give back when we have an opportunity to do so. I I really want to recruit more engineers into public office. I think our problems are nonpartisan. I think we just need to solve problems and listen to people. And I think this council does a great job of that, but more councils need to do that. More people need to do that. So Jennifer, thank you for everything. Um, you've you've done, and honestly, she is my sounding board, and I would come to these meetings fifty percent if I didn't have a chance to talk to her because she straightens me out on things. She gets, she just gets it. Like, she gets how people are, and I have to, I have to give my crazy ideas to her, and she's like, nope, that's not. Don't, don't go in with that idea. And that's not gonna work.
But she did let you jackhammer up the backyard.
Yeah, but the whole backyard has, it's just dirt now. So that's maybe not a great solution. So anyhow, for all of you, everyone in the city of Rancho Palisver East, thank you for the opportunity for the seven years I've had. I I I'll never forget any of this. This has been a real blessing for me. Thank you, everyone.
We do have some flowers.
Yes.
Or Christine and Jennifer. See how, see how cherry saves us once again.
We know you go, you need it.
Okay, so if you will, by acclamation, certify the results of the general municipal election of November fifth by adopting resolution number twenty twenty-four seventy-two.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Do we need to make that motion, though?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the mo- motion to adopt the results of the election as certified by the clerk of the Los Angeles County.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilman Bradley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Portam Alegria.
Yes.
Mayor Krukshank.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And with that, I can move into swearing the newly elected officials in if you'd like to step forward.
Thank you.
This is when you.
Can we help you take your hardware? I'll take the sign.
Do you not want your box? It has the best cookies in it.
I'm ready to swear in. We wanted to shake everyone's hand.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna continue with the swearing in right now, the new council members. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna continue with the swearing in right now of the new council members.
If I may ask you to raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your names. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, gentlemen.
And Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember.
George. Steve, you guys are this way. Yeah, you gotta get up here. Why don't you go grab your shirt, George? Madam City Clerk?
I'd like to call the roll of the newly seated.
Please.
Council. And for all intents purposes, for now, you'll all be council members in my roll call. Councilwoman Bradley.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferraro. Councilman Seo.
Here.
Councilman Lewis. And Councilman Peristam.
Here.
I think we have, we have a forum. So our fir- So our first item will be that I will ask for nominations for mayor.
Madam City Clerk, I'd like to nominate Dave Bradley as mayor.
Your second.
Second.
Okay. No further nominations? I'll call a roll. Councilman Bradley.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Councilman Peristam.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations, mayor.
Thank you very much. We, we will reorganize in a second.
And if I can ask the mayor now to ask for.
Yeah, so I would like to ask for nominations for Mayor Protem. And I would like to make a motion and nominate Councilman Paul Seo for Mayor Protem.
And I'll second.
Councilman Peristam.
Yes.
Councilman, forgive me, Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Or, sorry, I think I jumped the gun on that, didn't I? Mayor Bradley.
Yes.
Motion passes. We can then. Thank you. Mayor Bradley. There is one final presentation.
All right, so this is actually a tradition. It started before I was on the council. But there's this huge gavel and I, you never saw me use it, but I use it at home for croquet. So it, it basically says, this ceremonial gavel is presented each year to the newly seated mayor of the city of Rancho Palos Verdes. It serves as a symbol of the office of mayor visually reinforcing and recognizing the very large responsibilities and duties associated therewith. Congratulations, mayor.
Thank you very much.
Our final order of business, mayor, is the closed session report by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, the city council, the old city council, met in closed session to commence the annual performance evaluation of a position of city manager. That item has been continued to the January 21 meeting of the new city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, mayor, we can move adjournment.
I would just like to say a couple of quick things before we adjourn. I'd like to thank my colleagues for, once again, putting your trust in me and having me serve as mayor for the next year. We have some serious problems within the city that we need to address. And over the next year, I really hope that we can get after some of the issues that we have. I mean, Portuguese Bend and the landslide remediation, I think we all are aware, is an existential problem, both from a quality of life for some of our residents as well as a financial drain on the city. So we really need to get in front of that. And I think we're going to be almost singularly working on that as we work through 2005. Working with our Coast Guard partners and helping transition and figure out something to do long-term with the Point Vicente Lighthouse is certainly one thing that we're going to continue to press on next year. Coming up with a way forward for our civic center revitalization program with Portuguese Bend landslide, that's certainly something that's kind of taken a backseat. But this year, I really want us to come up with a long-term plan on where we're going to go with the civic center. I know one of the things that Mayor Protem Seo is very passionate about is working with our wireless carriers and coming up with an integrated master plan for 5G wireless deployment with, within the city to allow all of our residents to have better cell phone, both in their houses as well as on the streets. And then finally, coming up with a resolution to arena numbers in our housing crisis and working with our, our city staff to help come up with a plan that continues to meet the requirements of the state while continuing to fight for local control. But hopefully, all of those things, we will be able to get accomplished or at least get on the right path in the next year. And thank you all very much for being here tonight. Like to turn it over to Council, or Mayor Protem Seo for a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to my fellow council members for putting their faith in me to be Mayor Protem this year. And I hope this year, we can work together cordially, diligently to serve our community and to make sure that we listen and so that they're heard. And we get resources. What I'd like to say, we have the World Series Dodgers team and, in terms of our staff. But it's like playing without a baseball bat and a glove right now because they have all the solutions, but we don't have the resources to solve the problem. So hopefully, the mayor and I and the city council can get those resources who can fix the problems in our city. And I echo everything that the mayor said in regards to what our focuses should be. So hopefully, we go forward this year and we can solve all the problems that we have and then integrate ourselves so that we're looking 20, 30, 40 years from now where we can put the city in a good position to be financially healthy, meet our numbers for arena as well, and then hopefully, put a solution to the landslide and put that to bed. So thank you very much, everyone. I just want to thank the community for coming out here as well. Hopefully, I can continue to serve. And I just want to say that I love our RPV family and our community. And we hope that you guys keep coming to our meetings and voicing your opinion so that we can hear the solutions that we need to go forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And let me turn it over to our two, two of our newest council members for any opening remarks you'd like to make. Councilmember Lewis.
I'll be very brief, given everybody's been here a while and we've heard so many wonderful things. But I will say that watching the videos and the history of John and Eric was very humbling. When I see all that they accomplished in their time, and, and I was here for part of that time, but not all of it. So there's some really big shoes to fill. I feel a little bit challenged. So, but you know, as we start off a new year coming up, 2025, it's been, it's really tough year for the city. There's tens of thousands of municipalities in America and we're the one with the landslide. That's really tough. But you know, it's a new year, new opportunities. I echo my colleagues' remarks on the civic center and the wireless initiative. Those are both fine things that would help our, you know, community a lot. So I look forward to working on those things together. Thank you all.
But one of the really important things is how is your pie eating skills?
I'm going to defer to Steve on that.
Councilman Peristam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that question on first. I think I'm a shill in this competition. I've been recruited and I know why, because I'm just another body that somebody's going to beat. So, but I will, I will take the challenge. We have some big shoes and broad shoulders to fill with, with John and Eric's departure. And I'll tell you, they, they really are role models. The role models to me and watching them work for the last seven years. And I thank them for their community service. Not that they ran out of the building, but they ran out of the building. So they're not going to hear this. Also, the legacy upon previous councils and council members that, that we're really working on their shoulders, which they've established in the last 51 years, that makes us the city we are today. I want to thank the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve in a, in a new role, my community service. I, I appreciate that very much. I'm, I'm your servant. And I, as, as I think John and Eric both said, will be accessible to the community. That's very important to me. I look forward to the challenges and we do have some large challenges in front of us in this coming year and in, and then the years ahead. Also like to thank my wife Carol, my, my daughter Ashton, my other daughter Ashton and my son Adam for putting up with me for the last 20 some, almost their whole lives of listening to me talk about the city. They must be tired of that. And if they're still listening tonight, they're getting another dose. So I thank them for their support all these years. I also want to thank a number of people that tuned in remotely to, that I know throughout my life that have been contributors to, to help me through a lot of tough situations. I thank them as well. And a number of people in the community that are in the room tonight is, I'd like to thank them for coming out and being supportive. And I'm looking forward to the next meeting when we get to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, if there are no other comments, Council, Councilwoman Ferraro, did you have any?
Of course, don't I always? I just want to thank all the people that came tonight. This is, this has been fun and bittersweet. Losing two new, I mean, two, two old members, but getting two new. And I look forward to working with both of you. It's going to be a good year.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. With that, we stand adjourned to the 17th of December for our first full regular city council meeting with our new city council. Once again, congratulations, gentlemen, and welcome to the city council.
We have the reception outside.
Okay. Okay. Okay.